Six o'clock. It is December sixteenth. That's our regular meeting and we're going to start.
Do that stuff.
We need a motion approved units of the December.
Second, second.
Yep, I move to accept the minutes of the December second, twenty twenty four board meeting.
All second. All those on paper.
All right.
Warrant number thirteen A general one thousand dollars avoided check under fifty six thousand fifty six dollars and point two cents. Warrant thirteen B twenty four thousand seven hundred and sixty dollars and sixty four cents. General warrant number fourteen general one hundred and twenty two thousand four hundred and fifty one dollars and seven cents water. Fourteen thousand two hundred and sixteen dollars ninety five cents, nothing in sewer. Totally one hundred and thirty six thousand six hundred and sixty eight dollars and two cents. Payroll number fourteen one hundred and eleven thousand three hundred and thirty eight dollars and eleven cents.
So moved. Hi.
Um, we have one transfer. From the contingency account nineteen thousand to the street equipment repairs nineteen thousand. Prepare to track loss and leave machine.
Motion.
Second.
I need someone to there's a transfer that you requested if you want it so long to read it.
I'll do it. The treasurer's requesting approval to amend the twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five village budget as follows. To amend the following expenditure lines, Pete, a part time assistant to village attorney. A fourteen uh two zero zero one oh one uh thousand dollars uh in expenditure line. A part time police assistant eight um three one two zero zero one five two uh four thousand dollars to cover Dave Watson's salary. Also amend expenditure line eight nine zero one five zero eight zero two police retirement. By twenty seven thousand twenty seventy four dollars to cover police benefit change. I move that those transfers um or I move that those amendments be made to the budget.
Second. Those are fair.
Hi.
Uh, we're gonna go right now to talk about the Waterworth.
Little Village Board, can everyone hear me okay?
Yeah.
Amazing, thank you all for having me today and Mayor Marsh, thanks for uh asking me to come back here again. Um, so Mayor Marsh and I have had a number of conversations along with Mary Jane, the treasurer and uh. And Mayor Marsh mentioned that he's wanted me to come back and speak after the presentation I had a couple of weeks back. Um, just to speak about how we differentiate from some of the competitors in the space and as well. To answer any questions that the village board may have. Um, so I what I did here is I put together just a little bit of a PowerPoint and I want to just go through. How we really differentiate and then I'm gonna pretty much open the floor. Uh, for anybody to ask questions on the platform and I'm happy to go back into the platform if that's needed as well.
Hold on one second, Don, can you mute everybody else?
I think is that mic right there?
Oh, that's all.
Get someone on.
I'm gonna shut my mic off. Okay, all right, uh, Lockland, go ahead, sorry about that.
Beautiful, thank you, no problem, so. One thing I want to stress about Waterworth is um as you saw in the last presentation I had. Um, we're very much a software platform, but it's backed by our professional support and advising. So when we think about this industry, there's kinda. Two traditional solutions that have been used in the past for a lot of municipalities. One of those being Excel where maybe you have an intern come in or you hire someone and they put together a large spreadsheet. And the other is going to be a traditional rate consultant, right? Well, I want to touch on how we really differentiate here. Um, so let me pull it up on my computer and. I'm hoping everybody can see this, okay? So the first piece is going to be. Excel and when we think about Excel, it's typically used for long range financial forecasting, budgeting, everybody understands it. Now, the biggest differentiator with Waterworth is it's all already built out for you. So we're you're not having to go spend a bunch of man hours and building out this comprehensive spreadsheet. That can be very difficult to collaborate on and also difficult to present, right? A big focus for um, you know, for us as as village government is we want to be able to. Ensure financial transparency to the public and show where their money is going. And in our platform, that is why everything is extremely visual, so we can really break it down and demonstrate, so. But just like Excel, you are gonna have total control. Um, and you know, we're giving this at a very affordable price. Uh, but the biggest piece in how we differentiate is. Our ability to demonstrate and communicate. What we're doing, where we're at today and where we're headed, right? Now, the other piece is consultants and consultants do a really great job. They come in for a year, they maybe conduct a rate study and develop a financial plan. Um, and they are that third party credibility and expertise. The issue is with consultants, um, you know, they'll they'll come in, but. They only come in for one year and they develop a five year financial plan. And it's very much a snapshot in time, it's where we're at today. Where everybody here knows that, you know, things change drastically when we're thinking about inflation or cost of projects. I know even on the south the south end project when we originally originally estimated it, it was at twelve million, now it's at seventeen. So we see these changes consistently and it's hard to keep these studies that we do viable when done with consultants. So our differentiator here is we're giving you a living, breathing financial plan. Inside of a platform that we can update, that we can walk through different scenarios. What if we get a grant? What if we borrow? What impact is that A going to have on our financial plan? But B, what impact is it gonna have on our ratepayers and how can we minimize that impact? Now. The other piece is that support and advising, we can present remotely, we can, our team is there and dedicated. We're going to assist and give you full support and advising, present remotely at budget workshops. We can assist in all of that, tell you what we're seeing in the industry. Um, Mayor Marsh had asked me about other. You know municipalities that are currently utilizing Waterworth and said some individuals mentioned it was maybe for bigger communities. We work with communities of all sizes. Um, Albion in New York is one and their population is roughly around five thousand. Um, you know, Lee in Massachusetts, they're six thousand population. I actually onboarded a community. Not too far from us, uh, it's on the north or on the west coast and they have a population of eight hundred people. So it's for communities of all sizes and I think that's important to note, but. How we really help and why it is so um. Critical across the board is there's two big gaps in Excel and consultants as as traditional solutions. And we really focus on bridging those gaps with one collaboration, so allowing staff and department heads to communicate efficiently. But and collaborate efficiently by keeping information all in one place. But the other one is the communication. Demonstrating this information so people can truly understand it, right? So the public can really buy into the decisions we're making and understand why we are doing what we are. Um, and that's why in the cloud based platform which I went through last time I spoke with you all. Uh, everything is extremely visual. We can simplify simplify and isolate the conversation to the most important matter at hand. If we just want to talk about our cash position, if we just want to talk about capital projects, we can isolate it. And the biggest thing is we serve you as a platform to operate in this environment that's continuously changing. So interest rates, inflation, having to reshuffle projects and. Figure out what the best path forward is and how things are going to impact us into the future. That's what our platform allows you to do. Um, the last piece I will add, so I touched a lot on competitors in terms of Excel and consultants. So we're actually sole source and the reason for that is there's no other software platform. That has the rate engine that ours does, the ability to analyze billing data. And make sure that the way we're charging and structuring our rates is sufficient with the way our constituents are using water. And why that's so important is because. It has to be fair and equitable, right? It's such a delicate balance, we don't want to, you know, be subsidizing between different customer classes and things of that nature. And affordability is such a delicate topic that uh we want to do everything in our power. Uh, to make sure that we're doing the analysis and leveraging our data for recommendations and decisions. Now, I know I spat a mouthful at everyone here, but is there any questions for me? I'm gonna open up the floor now, uh, I'd be even happy to go in the platform if anyone wants a refresher.
Uh, so I I uh I did call the treasurer of Albion um and uh. Talked with them about their experience with the platform and they they found it very helpful. Uh, they had some some capital projects that they were undertaking and and this helped them uh. For a number of years helped figure out where they're going to be during before, during and after the projects were implemented. So they had they had some good things to say about the platform. Uh, I do have calls into Lee and Shelburne Vermont. Who are just slightly bigger than us each of them to talk to uh their capital people. Uh, and I'm hoping to get those calls uh uh tomorrow on. Just to, you know, to verify the their experiences with the platform. Um, so um. Mike has a question, go ahead, Mike.
Yeah, I have a question, yeah, uh, and thank you for the presentation, the last presentation and this one this evening. You talked specifically about water, water rates and water projects, et cetera. But I thought Brian, you said you were gonna use this for other applications within within the. Is that correct?
Yes, so so the same the same analysis platform that they use for predicting. Like obviously with with the seventeen million dollar South End project coming uh into, you know, into focus and starting next year. That was the driver for looking at how we figure out what our financial position will be. Considering the change in the cost of that and our need to figure out exactly where the the money will come. From to to bridge that gap, so that was the initial driver of looking for a tool like this. However, talking with with the with Lockland and 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 going into, you know, the. The real the the base. Program, this could be used for not just water, not just sewer, which is kind of attached to water, but also with our general fund. To look at how the in increase uh, you know, in different expenses, be it salaries. Be it healthcare uh and, you know, focusing on some of the capital expenditures that we are. Uh, you know, that we have like equipment uh bonding for a fire truck, bonding for, you know, a building improvements. How those can fit into the same buckets where we can place them and see where tax wise for simple. Simple changes in, you know, just salary, for instance, will will require an increase in the tax rate just to meet. That particular expenditure and, you know, and then if we, you know, if we. Do this, it it impacts our ratepayers by, you know, it it just it's it it shows you. Item by item, how different changes in your, you know, in your forecast can affect. What you need to charge the taxpayer rate wise in in order just to meet that expenditure. And so, you know, so that kind of developed the conversation, well, you know, what are the the various things that this this can help with? And, you know, they they could figure out, you know, like some some municipalities need use this to charge for trash. They figure out what the costs are involved with trash, obviously bigger municipalities use this for trash. But it it can be used for the general fund and so. As you're using more of the program, the add ons for the different segments become less expensive. And so really the driver became, well, let's use this for the general fund, which which, you know, a and the water and sewer piece become an add on.
Are we, so are we buying all three pieces?
Correct, all three pieces are are the twelve thousand.
Okay, well, yeah, I saw that there was a breakdown. So but there wasn't it wasn't an issue of we're gonna get this and this, maybe not this or.
So the the additional add on pieces were relatively. Very inexpensive compared to the utility that they could provide us. So basically what what I did instead of having water be the driving, water being the first initial subscription, okay? The the that the general fund became the first subscription, water second and sewer third.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, great question, I just I just pulled this up to show as well, we did start in water wastewater, but. Board members, much as yourselves, we we they wanted to see this across the board for all budget centers. So to just echo Brian uh or Mayor Marsh, that's exactly what um. As he was mentioning, we we can model anything out that is being overseen.
Would that include the the rates in water? Like if we raise the rate or reduce the rate, et cetera?
But yes. Yes, sir.
Based on the usage, because now that we've got all, you know, pretty much new water meters that are all digitally. Red, we can get some really. Good readings on usage over a period of time to tell us like what's the best. You know, best uh point to set the the rates at.
Yeah, that's such a great point, sir, and and I think that's exactly what we want to do, especially. Um, when we are discussing rates, I kind of mentioned it before, but. It's such a delicate topic as we want to protect affordability as much as possible. And as granular we can get with that analysis of how our constituents are using water or how they're. Um, discharging water on the wastewater side, as granular as we can get. That means we can get a little bit more creative, right? Because it's an art and a science, the science is, well, how do we generate enough, as Mayor Marsh was mentioning? To cover our needs and to recover our costs, but the art of it is, well, how can we make sure that this is. Affordable for our residents, right? So that's where the creativity comes in and looking in depth at the rate structure and having billing data for that. And using that for the analysis is super important and we can do it all in the platform.
Can you put in, like when we do the preliminary budget, can we put the preliminary budget in there and then if we as we make changes, it'll show how?
Yes.
Yeah, so.
Yes, sir, that's you're you're hitting the nail on the head, that's exactly what we'll do. So if you decide to cut something from it or add something to it, we see how that's gonna impact your financial position in the long term.
Yeah, so I mean, eventually, you know, eventually we're gonna have to look at uh potential replacement for uh some some sort of major, major project. With the high end reservoir because of the, you know, the the continuing leak that we have there. So how how are we, you know, how does that play into uh uh the the rates going forward? I mean, that's that's gonna have to be something we look at in the next few years, so uh. And we're losing water because of that, so how is the saving of water going to counter the expenditure? You know, and and surely one of the things that E S D looks for. When they're, you know, if we're going back to that to to talk about uh how we need this money. Otherwise, we're going to impact our ratepayers in an amount that is. You know, almost uh, you know, uh impossible.
Right.
Uh, this this helps us show. Clearly to them. If we don't get extra money and complete this project, it will require us to have rates jumped by this amount. So it it just it's 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 a better way for us to be able to show, for instance, how are we gonna fund the five million dollar gap? That that this out there is gonna cost us extra, okay? Here we could have used this program to show that. For us to borrow that five million dollars, we have to increase rates twenty percent.
Yeah.
And so so this will help with, you know, with with documenting to that, that 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 this is the impact, you know? Uh, and and here it is, here is the financial model with you giving us half the money. Uh, or us not getting any money, okay? And and just to break even, you know, and and so. So, you know, if if spending this money for this consulting platform allows us to get five hundred thousand dollars. That seems like good math and 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 that's that's, you know, and that's something that. You know, I think will help us not just with water, but with going out and 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 helping, you know, helping our platforms or FEMA grants. For things like, you know, bonding a new fire truck, okay? Here's here's how it impacts uh, you know, here's how it impacts our. Here's how we calculate our responses uh that that we have for seven eighty seven, three seventy eight, and we can go to the state and say, hey. This is fifty percent of of our our call, you know, our calls that we respond to. It'll it'll help with a a a number of different things and and uh, you know, and 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 I've been with spreadsheets since spreadsheets were invented. I mean, my first job was at one two, La Russ one, two, three, who invented spreadsheet. So and and I have no clue how to start a a a a model like that would, you know, that would, I I mean, I. I just have no idea how to do that, so uh. Mike, go ahead. Oh, sorry, Lockland, we're gonna let Mike ask a question.
Yeah, please, no.
So I I I guess my question is to the presenter, is there any of your current users? That A uses to the extent that Brian has outlined and two, i- isn't it correct though that this model? Will be created based upon the reliability of the data that the village provides and it's. You're not gonna make assumptions beyond that, what they provide, correct?
No, sir, so what we do is, and that's a great question, um, so I'll answer the second part first. Where the data we take to populate this is public data, it's based on audit reports, end of year actuals. And then we make some assumption assumptions based on historical data, so. We, you know, we're gonna put an inflationary amount in there that we want to project, but that isn't to say that it's going to. Like it it very well could change and that's why we have an adaptive model. But um, in terms of the data that we populate, it's all gonna be from audited financials and. You know, um, I think the really important piece is how do we get the those assumptions as accurate as possible? Assumptions are never one hundred percent accurate, but we'll look at things like the C P I, we'll look at. You know, historical data to see how numbers have, you know, what percentage of increases we've seen on materials and costs of. You know, of on salaries and benefits, things of that nature, and we can make some assumptions there. And of course, we'll keep our ear to the ground as we're working with more and more municipalities in New York and see what they're seeing. Um, the second piece, and I really wanna, I I appreciate you asking that question, sir, and and Mayor Marsh, I appreciate everything you had said about. Um, you know, accessibility to outsourced funds, I think that's a really. Big piece here in terms of R O I, grant agencies and uh, you know. The state, when we're looking at low interest loans, they ask for two, two of their top requirements. One is going to be a long term financial plan and the second is going to be an asset management plan. Both of those things can be done within this platform, which really gives you a big leg up in the grant writing process. So we've created reports, we did one for um. Chillicothe, Ohio that got them access to sixty million dollar low interest loan from the state. Because they needed it for a wastewater treatment plant upgrade, that's just one example. Um, either way, our team will help facilitate the materials for your grant writing team. So that way you can, you know, at least put the best foot forward to get access to that outsourced funding. Because in at the end of the day, everyone's fighting for that same pool of money, right? So uh, as much as we can do to get a leg up, it's it it does make a difference.
Can I ask one last question, I promise this is the last one.
Go ahead.
Yes, yes, please.
So who makes the who makes the assumptions that go into the model?
Great question, yeah, it's going to be a very collaborative effort. So when we talked about the competitors, I mean, there's consultants where consultants will just do everything for you, they just make the assumptions assumptions. They say, Mayor Marsh, send over your data, they work their magic and spit out a big report and says, here's what's gonna happen. That's not how we do it, but we also don't don't do it just like how it's done in Excel where it's all up to you. Um, we're very much a hybrid approach, we're gonna work with your team, we're gonna analyze the data. And we're gonna work with your team and say, hey, what have you seen in the past? We're gonna keep our ear to the ground, see what other municipalities are seeing in the area and of course, we'll look at the C P I. But at the end of the day, we're doing as much research into what those assumptions should be.
Thank you, thanks, Brian.
Yep, thanks, Mike.
Amazing, thank you.
Anybody have any other questions?
So. Um, no, I I don't have any questions, I think both presentations and as well as the rationale uh is. Um, certainly answer all of my questions, um, frankly, I'm. Ready to uh move to uh purchase this, but in uh so that we can get going on the budget and looking at what. We can and could save for next year, but in deference to our to a colleague who's not here tonight. I will uh table that motion until the next meeting.
Perfect, okay.
Uh, Lockland, so so uh, we're good, uh, we're we're just gonna table the the vote on it until uh. January sixth. January sixth.
Perfect, okay, well, I think I I look forward to hearing from everyone and I want to thank all of the board members and. Um, you know, individuals from the village for coming and letting me speak today, thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Alrighty, bye now.
Bye bye.
Okay, put that on the agenda for the sixth.
Yep.
Thank you, David.
Perfect, uh, I have three things. Firstly, Santa in the Village, uh, it's been all over our Facebook page, it's officially this Saturday, starting at nine A M. Uh, we just announced the route today, don't know it off the top of my head, basically we start in North End and work our way to the South and then finish here. Uh, candy cane, dog treats, hopefully the weather cooperates. Uh, the second thing. And Toys for Tots, we're collecting new unwrapped toys, Toys for Tots as well. Uh, we've been pretty successful with that in the years past, uh, there will be an appearance from the Grinch as well. People either love it or hate it, he's very excited about it. Um. Secondly, there was a lot of like just. And coincidentally, discussions about like fire trucks and bonding and all that stuff. Uh, FEMA opened up the A F G grant uh for a second time this year. Uh, which is kind of rare that they do it within the same fiscal year twice. Uh, we've talked with our grant writer, we're putting in, she said we scored well enough to put in for the fire truck again. We just didn't score well enough to actually receive the full one point one million dollars that we initially put in for. She suggested with the scoring and all the other stuff that I'm not even gonna pretend to know about or understand. That we put in for eight hundred and sixty five thousand dollars for this one, uh, it would be a forty three thousand two hundred and fifty dollar match. Obviously, it's probably not gonna buy a brand new fire truck in full, but it's certainly a substantial chunk of money that. Take the burden off of the village itself, so we'll keep our fingers crossed for that.
And can we set up a meeting to talk about?
Yeah. Absolutely, okay. Uh, and then thirdly, the main reason is I'm requesting. To switch our computer programs for the department, uh, we currently use E S O, which is previously Firehouse. Um, there's a lot of backend stuff that just. Makes my life pretty difficult when it comes to year end reporting or the call reports themselves. Uh, we met with Billy Edwards, who represents Alpine Software or Red alert. Um, we did a couple of different presentations with myself, he's actually gonna be with Lyle. Because part of this is in the backend of inspections and. Any sort of uh violations, inspections, management, stuff like that. Uh, this is. Very much friendlier on the backend with reports. Uh, this new program has a ability to integrate with the CAD system that we use through the town colony. So as calls come in, it would auto populate the reports. Uh, this also allows us to have a tablet kiosk downstairs. Where as members return to the firehouse after calls, they scan their thumbprint, they are in the call. Um, kind of eliminates relying on, hey, put me in the book, someone forgets, you don't get credit, you don't make the points. Now everybody comes back, scan in, go from there. Uh, the grand total is seven thousand nine hundred and ninety four dollars. Um, with the two, it could potentially be less. Uh, very much depends on Lyle's meeting that he has with Billy sometime this week, it could be. One thousand four hundred and ninety nine dollars less, uh, depends if Lyle wants the mobile inspection or if he's gonna just kind of do it the way he does it. Um. The overall total for the fire department side compared to E S O is. the overall total for the fire department side compared to ESO is actually a little bit less in the grand scheme of things, uh, which is good. It's right around five thousand dollars for this. Uh, ESO is like right, a little over six thousand.
So the sixty-one, sixty-two is already in your budget for that?
Correct. Yeah.
Uh, so really all you're asking for is additional two thousand bucks to, to spend to.
More or less.
When is the subscription for this?
So we would, in order to be up and running for March first, they would require a signature for January first. They will delay billing until our subscription is up with ESO, which would work out to be the new fiscal budget.
Okay.
So.
So Don said you would explain this to me. So.
Yep.
Because, you know, the, the ESO is less expensive. So what's, explaining again what the difference is. So we're gonna be paying a little more, but we're getting.
So their ESO for the grand total bundle is a little less than what we would pay with Alpine.
Yeah.
Um, it has.
Well, that's what I'm saying. You wanna go with Red Alert.
Right, correct. Yep.
Okay, so.
Uh, the, there's a difference in pricing between the inspections and violations, as well as a mobile inspection subscription. That's a little more on the Lyle end of things.
So basically, we're paying for the Lyle, the Lyle.
It would be, yeah, there's.
Seventy-nine, seventy-four would be the whole.
So seven-nine-ninety-four.
So that would come out of another part of the budget.
Yeah, so, so essentially, it's a wash for David.
Yeah.
And then it would be.
Put it in a budget.
Is there something that Lyle already subscribes to that this would be in replacement?
No, it, it uses part of the ESO program for his inspections for the list of everything as well. Right. So it's more or less to make the whole.
So this helps David and this helps Lyle if it's seventy-nine-ninety-four.
The other good thing about this is, is that when Lyle does a fire inspection or he does any type of inspections and it shows that they have violations, if David goes on a fire call and they, they'll be able to see exactly what's.
All of us. If there's any sort of change in ownership, all their contact information is up to date in the app itself. We're not necessarily relying on a dispatcher who, if the information was sent to them or hoping for a responder, we can have all that information readily available. Um, each year for the LoSAP award, award, uh, you're required to put in your NIFRS information, um, send it to the state. There's a full breakdown. I have a spreadsheet of it. Uh, the system that we have currently doesn't really create a full spreadsheet breakdown for LoSAP points. Uh, this Red Alert program does where it saves me probably a week and a half worth of matching numbers for a spreadsheet, hoping that it's right. People complaining that it's not. Uh, just very much more of the twenty-first century with the program that integrates with, with the town for CAD and everything else. There are other departments in the town of Colony that uses this as well. Uh, Shake Road who runs.
Did they recommend it or how did that come?
Uh, so he actually just kinda cold called, uh, emailed. Um, I've since talked to the other departments that use it. They say they enjoy it. Um, it seems relatively easy to use. It's gonna be a little bit of a change as any new program is, but it looks like it should make my life or whomever is in charge of these reports down the road life a bit easier.
Yeah.
By the way, Dave, I got the LoSAP package.
Perfect. Um, pretty much up to date, southern.
If that's okay with you, I'd like to make a motion that, uh, uh, we approve the fire department's request to switch from, uh, uh, ESO to Red Alert effective January first.
That's when we have to have the contract signed. Um, it could, the price could adjust depending on how the meeting with Lyle goes, but at most it will be seven thousand, nine hundred and ninety-four dollars. Um, I would recommend that we do sign a three-year contract because the price increase is then only six percent per year. If you do a one-year contract that is eight percent, um, just save a little bit of money.
Sure.
That's ahead of an inflation. Alright.
I don't make the rules. I just.
Yeah, so up to seventy-nine-ninety-four.
Yep.
I'll second that motion. All those on paper.
Alright.
Any opposed?
Thank you very much. Hope to see everybody Saturday.
Yes.
And if not, have a Merry Christmas.
So we have a gift to give to you on Sat.
Yep, we'll take them, we'll put them in the fire trucks, my trucks, G C vehicle somewhere. We'll make Santa hold them the whole way.
Looking forward to it, Dave. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Uh, okay, much nice.
South End project.
Okay, so, uh, because we're phasing the South End Water and Sewer Project, Mobella as the consultant engineers needs to rework how they describe their initial, uh, engineering work for the first phase. And so I, I included the narrative as to what basically their request is, uh, that then guarantees they get paid by EFC. So that's what that was all about. It's the same ones, uh, that were initially in the project, uh, you know, part of the whole, the whole, uh, the whole scope, but this is just broken out now that we're phasing it. So it's just a, a change that we need to make, uh, based on that rework. So we, what do we need to do, Don?
Make a motion to adjust, will follow the existing professional service agreement by three hundred and sixty-five thousand, five hundred dollars.
Three hundred and sixty-five hundred.
Alright, I'll, I'll make the motion to adjust, uh, the Lobella's, to adjust Lobella's existing professional services agreement, uh, for the South End project by three hundred and sixty thousand, five hundred dollars?
What does that mean? They're expanding?
Nope.
Giving them?
So they're just segmenting to the initial money, uh, into this phase. So the overall number was much bigger. They're, they're just, they have, exactly. So it's just describing what their initial scope work is for the first phase. So this is out of the money, the total project. It's not in addition to.
This is just a breakdown.
Correct. It is. And so this way, this, this is when they submit a bill to EFC to get paid, right? It matches up with the scope of work. So that's it. It's not in addition to. Uh, you're second.
I, I, I made the motion.
He made the motion. Any of your second.
I'll, I'll second the motion. All those are favored.
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, uh, as we can see, there's some additional roof leaks here. There's some in the back stairwell. It's still leaking over here. So the, the initial, the initial proposal was from Star. They wanted to replace everything at fifty-two thousand dollars. Uh, it seemed like a lot of money for a replacement. So I brought in Skyway. Skyway said they could fix the roof that we have, that it's nowhere near beyond its useful life. Um, so I signed a contract for thirteen thousand, five hundred, uh, as an emergency. Um, and they're gonna start that work hopefully sometime this week, but, uh, do we need a formal?
Yes, we need a motion.
We need a motion to accept their, their contract for thirteen thousand. This will be reimbursed by, uh, Phil's next stand grant anyway. So, uh, that's a good thing.
I, I wanna make the motion to approve, uh, Skyway Roofing to complete the emergency repairs as, uh, signed by the mayor, uh, to two fifty Broadway's roof at a cost of thirteen thousand, five hundred dollars.
We'll second that motion.
All of it.
Alright.
Alright, we're gonna table the water worth for the next meeting. Uh.
Hope you want to table the property thing.
Yeah, so, so after, after talking with Tim and, and going through a couple, a couple of grammatical changes to the, uh, to the, uh, unsafe building and vacant property registry in addition to our code, we're gonna, uh, table that and put out the final version for the next meeting. Uh, we are going to tentatively schedule a public hearing for that on January twentieth.
Twenty.
Twenty. Uh.
Thank you. I, I appreciate the extra time.
Yeah.
I look at this. Thank you.
Uh, so just for some, some historical, uh, all of the municipalities around us, Troy, Albany, Waterfleet have similar pieces of, uh, in their code. Um, this helps, you know, make sure that those types of buildings are, um, moving along, you know, becoming productive.
Like, like I said, as I went through this, I said, I think this is a great companion piece to our property.
Absolutely.
Yes.
Yes. Well, this is a piece that, you know, uh, will, will help make sure that we're covering the cost of reviewing, uh, and, uh, you know, making sure that those properties that are abandoned or vacant or are, you know, structurally sound, et cetera. So, um, but we will publish the, the final version well in advance of the public hearing.
Thank you. Yeah, I like, I, I like what we have so far. And I agree with Tim that, uh, not only will this complement the, uh, property maintenance code, but also, um, it, you know, I think it helps us keep an eye on the village as a whole to see what we have, uh, and make sure that the property is becoming useful again.
So Lyle did, just so everyone's aware, Lyle did submit a list, uh, uh, of some of the naked properties around the village. And, uh, I put all of those properties into our Monday, uh, tracking tool, prior management tool. So we'll be able to keep tabs on what, you know, what, who's got violations and, and any of the, any of the updates on those. And then eventually, hopefully, they apply for a building permit and then become productive and then they roll off. What's next?
Okay, um, next is, next is the, uh, the policies. I amended the Dropbox policy per Molly's request. And also the credit card policy, the full joint policy and election policy. Place need approval. If David can get reviewed, they're okay.
Is that back here? Where is?
Yeah, they were in there. Yeah.
They were in the board folder.
I, it wasn't, they're not in the minutes.
Oh, okay. That's okay. No, it's okay. I did see them.
Some grammatical things that I fixed.
I just wanted to make sure I, I saw the most up-to-date thing, but.
Yep. Uh, do we need one by one, Don?
No, you can put them all together. I just need Tim to approve the, it's here.
I'll make a motion. I'll second the motion. All in the paper.
Aye.
Any opposed?
On, uh, on December eleventh, we had a power outage in the center of the heart of the village.
I remember.
And during that, the generator for the police department, fire department would fire up. Come to find out that the radiator, it sprung a leak and was, when they did that, it caused some damage to it and we have to have it repaired. And the cost of it is ten thousand, four hundred and forty-five dollars and fifty-eight cents because they'll make the, the radiator is no longer available. So they have to basically major fashion ones that are going down the avenue to do that. Um, I think we should really consider doing is looking in the future. We just started talking about the budget is replacing it. They don't have parts for it. They have to get aftermarket parts and sometimes they work and sometimes they don't work. And it's the recommendation of Cat Milton that we look into replacing it. And the good part is that we don't need, is we don't have the roof siren like we had before. We don't need that oversized one that we have. We can go to a smaller one. It still won't be too, we don't, can't get a small one, but we can get a smaller one. But we're gonna be getting, I'll be getting quotes and stuff just to, you know, just to, for budget purposes.
Uh, I've already started working on that and there may be enough funds left over in our sand grounds to actually fund a good portion of this. So.
Yeah.
Anything else? All the other projects you had, uh, pegged and we've got them.
We're so far coming in under budget on a lot of these items. So, uh, you know, we, we, we may be able to get it, uh, uh, done. And I'm gonna, um, there's a couple other sources I'm gonna ask for. My tin, my tin cup is out.
So I need a rule, cause this is, I had to order you to authorize this to get, get the work done because.
Yeah.
We can't guarantee that it'll fire up.
Yeah.
Um, they're coming this week to, to replace the, or replace the radiator. And they're gonna also put the block heater in that burnout because of it. And it's degenerate, I already told you, the police and fire department, the generator is gonna be out of service for the next two days after, when they fix it, while they're fixing it. But they're already worried about that. I need a motion to approve the emergency purchase for ten thousand, four hundred and forty-five dollars and fifty-eight cents.
Okay, I'll, I'll make the motion to, uh, approve repairs to the generator, uh, two fifty Broadway by Cat Milton at a cost of ten thousand, four hundred and forty-five dollars and fifty-eight cents.
I'll second the motion. All those are paper.
Aye.
And just a side note on that, uh, we, I changed the, it's day inspected once a year, but now they're gonna do it twice a year because of the age of all of them. Because of its emergency, you know, the need for it. Cause there's, we have four generators in the village. Um, one's brand new one down at the, the water treatment plant, the other one at Ward's and up there, um, CH Hill. And those, those, the ones that, those two are critical that they do go down. We had a situation where it degenerated again, but we didn't know that. None of us knew when they put this, that it actually has a gas tank that's not hooked up to gas. That's what it has. It's a diesel. So we had that diesel supply remain. Nobody knew that, but, but now we're not.
That's which one?
The one at Ward's.
Can we convert that? Well, that one after that.
I don't think so because it's diesel.
Yeah, alright, uh.
So then wetlands, the tires.
Say it again?
Tires.
Oh, yeah. Uh, so we've been talking about the tire pond that we inherited from fifty years ago, uh, that the E C wrote us a violation on and asked for remediation plan. And they're looking into this with a new number of different possibilities. We found a company who actually is a manance that can, that can do the work. We found a place that can take the tires, uh, and we developed the plan that D E C is in concept, okay with. Um, and so, uh, I put together a budget that basically kind of calculates even at the worst where this is going to cost. And, uh, and it's roughly thirty-five thousand or what was it, thirty-six thousand?
Say forty thousand should be on the outside.
So look, so, uh, that included an extra day of labor and six thousand dollars a day for the, for the cleaning guys. And then I included an extra truckload of tires, a hundred of tires for truckload. So basically, uh, and I estimated, uh, that most of the tires are commercial tires, which are more expensive to get rid of. So anyways, so, uh, we need to get this done. At D E C is, is, uh, this is the only company that does this type of thing after calling literally everybody. Uh.
D E C didn't even have anybody that they could do this.
Yeah.
Wow.
Um, so, uh, now it's a matter of coordinating with National Grid because this is of course right under the, the power lines.
And we, we also have to, we have to have a inspector from National get there to watch over the whole project.
Make sure that the, the.
And that's it, right?
Yeah.
I don't even know, I don't think we have to pay for it, but they're gonna have to be there.
Yeah, I think we do have to pay for it. I included that in the budget. So.
Is it, is it on their property?
No, it's on our property. In order to do the work.
They want somebody standing there watching to make sure that our machines are nowhere near their transmission lines.
I can do that.
You're, you're not.
But I have.
This guy went to a special school in order to earn five hundred dollars an hour, I guess.
I have a fluorescent jacket.
Please try.
Please try. So anyway, so basically, I, like, this is all, this is a surprise project. So this is gonna have to come out of unappropriated funds. Uh, but this is, this'll take care of this and get this off of the radar and get it clean. And then it's, it's never, I mean, it's been there how long gone?
Sixty years.
And lucky us, we get to inherit.
We, we can always get the sixty-year thing.
Wait, so, so, um, where, where is this? And, and.
The Erie Canal down, but right behind U-Haul.
Yeah.
Behind, in the wetlands there.
Oh, okay.
They look like turtles. They're not turtles.
If you look, if you look, when you go over the ramp from exit six.
Yeah.
You look to the right.
Yeah.
You'll see water. It looks like there's turtles in the water. That's actually tires.
Wow, okay. And we own that?
We own that.
Okay.
When they gave us the Erie Canal, they gave us the tires.
So when did, uh, how did D E C, what, how did this come up now?
National Grid was replacing all the power lines.
Yeah.
They had to report it.
Oh.
They have to.
Oh, they're our friends.
Yeah.
Okay.
So we need a motion to approve up to forty thousand. I expect it to be somewhere right around thirty, but just to be safe in case there's something.
I will make the motion to authorize up to forty thousand out of unappropriated funds to pay for the tire removal project. That's proposed.
I'll second that.
All those are paper.
Aye.
Any opposed? And I hate every minute of this.
Okay.
It's very wearing.
Well, I hope we can do something in that area once, once, I mean, that's the problem. You, you, you wish it were usable after we cleaned it up.
Not, not really.
Right.
Unfortunately.
I mean, we can't even really access.
Uh, a whole bunch of things here. Lots going on. But, um, in advance of our South End project, National Grid has come back after we brought it down about a hundred times. In advance of our South Bend project, National Grid has come back after we brought it down about a hundred times and said they need to replace the gas lines on Wolfert and, uh, Wolfert.
And north.
North quarter.
And north quarter of north.
And then all the way up, uh, to Van Rensler to, uh, looks like Rainbow Hill, right?
Well, yeah, they're gonna do something on that, that section, yeah.
And so we are coordinating with them to make sure that the two projects, the South Bend project and their, and their replacing, uh, the gas line does not interfere with each other. Um, and in some ways it may actually help. This, I still haven't figured out.
What is this planned for?
Uh, beginning of next year.
They're gonna, they're gonna.
We're gonna start, yeah. We're gonna start tomorrow.
We're aware of our dig purpose.
Yes. They say fill it out every time they take care of it.
Okay, I've got a couple emails. I think they were from random people asking about the drones that are infecting America. I, I, we have no control over the drones, uh.
It's a federal matter.
It is. And, uh, so the, the village is not taking any action on drones, just so anyone asks. Today, Don, Lyle and I had a meeting, uh, with N S H group. They are starting their expansion project and, uh, they're gonna be starting some site work in the next few weeks to start that project. They wanna be operating out of there in November?
November of next year.
Right, right, right. So that's exciting. Um, Soldier Run, we had a, a tour of Soldier Run today, Lyle, Don and I, and, uh, it's a pretty amazing facility. They hope to occupy that in spring, I believe. Uh, they hope to have a, uh, Memorial Day, uh, flag raising, I believe, is what they're gonna do there, so. Uh, it looks amazing in there. It's a pretty, it's pretty cool. Uh, it's, or some of the apartments and they're really nice, so we hope to welcome those residents.
Yeah. They mentioned about the affordable housing thing, the sign is out there to see.
What's that? Oh, so there was a question about the sign that says affordable housing. Technically, all of the residents that, that are gonna, that there are, it is considered affordable housing. Uh, but it all goes through their vetting process and their application, a certain.
And a majority has to be to that.
Correct, that's correct, yeah. Uh, fur leaf season is officially closed, uh. As usual, our crew knocked it out of the park. We did two hundred and seventy-four loads.
Two seventy-two.
Two seventy-two, okay. Two seventy-two loads that went to, uh, City of Albany or Guard Waste Processing. Uh, so any leaves now have to be in bags, please.
Did that part go okay, going to City of Albany?
Extremely smoothly.
Good, good.
Way better than what we were doing before.
Really? Good, good.
A couple of the days, they had the most loads they've ever done in, in a particular.
Forty-four.
Wow. A lot of leaves.
Efficiency matters, uh. Just for comparison, last year we had, I think, four or five days of overtime. Uh, this year, I think we only had two or three.
Yeah, not too many.
Yeah, and they were only half days, so.
And that was because of this change?
Much more efficient.
Wow, I'm glad.
So, uh, that's good.
As a new leaf box itself, dude.
Oh, good. Good, good work on all of that. Everything, everything was picked up timely.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Uh, regarding their road work we're gonna do on Simmons, uh, between the, the railer tracks and Broadway. Uh, because the volume of traffic on there is largely going to the wastewater treatment plant. I reached out to Albany County, uh, with Allison Lane's help and, and, uh, uh, they are open to contributing towards rebuilding that road considering the volume of traffic that they send through it. So I'm hoping that, uh, they and the City of Albany, uh, both contribute because D G S uses that road a lot.
And we have to, we have to build, we have to build it up.
Yeah, it has, it's gonna.
It can't be like it is now. It has to be built up earlier, so we have to, more of.
Great.
Heavy dakers.
So asking them for help, uh, they help pay for that, so that's great. They're open to it. Uh, I am working on potentially starting to use Casella's transfer station on Simmons to accept our trash instead of going all the way to, uh, the, the, the Coho's landfill, Town of Colony runs. Um, it's just a matter of, you know, what's the rate if it's comparable, comparable to the towns, which they're trying to work out.
Good.
But it'll take far less time and, uh, and, you know, um, be more efficient.
Yeah.
Uh, Kevin is going to present a comp time analysis in the January meeting to talk about the, uh, how it worked for this year. Uh, there was a savings, I think, uh, of about thirteen thousand dollars when you net everything out, so it was successful. Helps the village save some money on overtime. Uh, he's gonna prepare and provide that analysis next meeting. Uh, the new camera server is, uh, supposed to be installed tomorrow at, at, uh, the police station. Uh, and that will help us expand our storage and be able to hold far more days worth of data in case we ever have to go back and, uh, includes storage for the new cameras that we're installing. Uh, in January, we're going to delve into a review of the court operations, the financials for the court and talk about some potential, uh, uh, realigning that, that, uh, that I think is worth a conversation. Uh, I'll provide everybody with some data, uh, as we get into, uh, towards that date. I don't know if it's gonna be the first meeting or the second meeting of January. Uh, Mid City is giving a meeting, uh, this week to start the process to filing the Restore New York final, uh, grant that we received from Mid City Plaza. Uh, their work is complete and now we need to start submitting the financials so that, uh, um, E S D will sign off on that and give him the money. Um, but the plaza, I think, looks great and so is, is coming along, uh, in quite an amazing way. So, uh, Glenwood Road survey was complete about Glenwood Road. I'll share that and some ideas that we can kick around, uh, for that, uh, the next meeting, uh. We are still working through capping the leaf dump. That was another find, uh, that D E C.
Well, we also want to tell about that, Simmons?
Oh, yes. So Simmons has to excavate some material as part of their construction plan because they have to go so deep to build an enormous foundation to hold the weight of their fifty-ton crane and some of them. So they have a ton of material that they don't need anymore, so it's potential that they're, if the work, if the material is appropriate, they're gonna use the material to cap our leaf dump. So it'll kind of be a win for everybody.
Good.
Uh, yeah, uh, we're starting to work on a twenty-five, twenty-six budget. Uh, we need to schedule some workshop dates. Can, we talk about that tomorrow and put some dates on the calendar and see what they shake out, so.
No.
Alright. I know. Uh, but, uh, I am going to send a letter to all the department heads, asking them to start looking uh, at their budgets and some of their capital needs for the next budget cycle. Uh, Don is still working, uh, on the, the Manans monthly.
Yeah, but that's.
Why you take my thunder?
I'm sorry.
You told me to write stuff down and I read it back.
I'm going through my list. I'm doing pretty good stuff. Go ahead, Don.
Are you all, the way you guys.
Can I actually ask one thing? What, uh, did B and G put in a new service at, uh, two eighty? Said the electrical service?
Yes, and it looks fantastic. It probably is a ten thousand dollar electrical panel. Uh, it's a commercial grade panel. It looks great. It is light years ahead of the panel that we used to have and they paid a big amount.
And they took out a bunch of stuff that doesn't.
Oh, when I was down there, uh, uh, the guy, the guy looked at it, he looked like, oh my goodness.
Yes, that panel, the original panel that was in there was from.
The night, from the nineteen forties or fifties.
Probably, uh, and, uh, uh, now it's, it's amazingly advanced, so if we ever have to upgrade stuff at the village, uh, at the village office, this makes it much easier.
And there's al, there's also eight, or ten, open spots. So we can put stuff in there. We can, we don't have to push up panel in anymore.
And I forgot to look at the, the EV charger.
It's not, it's, it's.
A little pole.
There, they have to, they have to, uh, finish running it. They have, they're all set to run it, but they have to, they're gonna run it. They trached around where the dumpster is.
Oh, I thought they were gonna do it overhead.
They, no.
You want me finished?
They're going up and it's fine.
They're gonna, they're gonna go around the dumpster, up to the pole, then run it over to the building that way.
Okay, I'm sorry, Don. You see?
Take my, you're another one taking my thunder.
Alright, I'm, 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 I'm gone here, um. Now that leaves are done, we're gonna start working on replacing and upgrading, uh, traffic signs throughout the village, neighborhood by neighborhood. Uh, improving, you know, taking, replacing stop signs and so on, anything that needs to be upgraded, uh, changed. If it's flinging and, you know, like peeling off, we're gonna, we're gonna start swapping them out neighborhood by neighborhood. Uh, the EV charger is, uh, you know, is going in. Holiday train was great. I think I already mentioned that.
Yeah.
Um, let's see, uh, last weekend, the police in conjunction with state police did a D W I detail. They caught one felony D W I, uh, they caught two felony A U O's, which were unlicensed and several other traffic, traffic tickets. Um, water bills will be mailed by January first. They are due February fourteenth.
Thirteen. Whatever, whatever that Friday is.
Fourteenth.
I don't know.
Yes.
It was fourteenth, last Thursday. Oh, yes, it was fifteenth. You're right. I'm sorry. My mistake.
Fourteenth. Uh, all right, a couple other things I got here. Did that. Police chief met with assistant or new, uh, uh, district attorney Lee Kinlan and they hope to work on some projects together. That was a good meeting. Uh, we are still working on some energy improvements to this building. Uh, talked about that. Next meeting, I'll be submitting a proposal, uh, for replacing the roof over this stairwell and insulating it, and that is going to be paid for out of some of those, uh, nicer to money. So that will be free for the village. Uh, I just need it approved by them before we can sign the contract and, and authorize that. Uh, I talked about that. Uh, there was another meeting about the daughters and charities, new project at, on Manand Road. Um, that is still being formulated and it's gonna be an amazing project when it gets started.
And Frank Construction's gonna do it.
They, yeah, they're the same company who did, uh, Soldier Run. Uh, I'm talking with Dwight to, uh, replace the water tank in this building with a heat pump one. Again, that's gonna be, uh, at the, uh, using our energy smart money, so there's no cost to the village. Super energy efficient and, uh, and replaces our natural gas one.
That's great.
Yeah. Uh, let's see. U-Haul has given the village or given the public, I guess, a few parking spaces, uh, in, in their parking lot that they're still working on, uh, at, at the exit ramp, exit six, that can be used for the public to then use the, uh, the bike trail and connect to the, uh, Hudson River.
Is that marked yet?
That, we can't, we can't use it till they're renovating the, that side for truck deposit. They're gonna make, um, so when they get pop, like the pod things, that's where they're gonna be going in and out of the building.
Uh.
But it, it's gonna depart a lot. It's gonna, there's gonna be three or four spots down to the right.
Well, that's great.
But, and they're, the only thing they asked us, that we, 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 we pay for a signage for.
Okay.
So, um, that would be, so once they're done with that, we'll probably, we'll probably install in the spring, but, um, but once they get that done, we'll be able to do that.
Yeah, that's huge.
I'm almost done, I swear. Uh, we're working on, one of the things that came up in our energy order, there are still some lights that we need to convert from regular, like in every breezeway here. Uh, we're gonna work on getting those all, and then around the building, there's some lights that need to be replaced. Um, we're working on that. Time tomorrow, or, or there's a.
I'll, I'll take my thunder.
Alright, alright, I swear, I'm done. Alright, I'll see you reports, Tim.
Uh, yeah, the energy report, uh, in regards to the Little River project, I had a call today from Andy Cummings from, uh, uh, C P Kansas City. Uh, I discussed with him about their, uh, property, which is the, uh, old rail spur. Uh, and, uh, asked if he could, uh, you know, discuss with his people whether or not they'd be willing to, uh, release that property to the Village of Manans or, you know, whatever they could do. Uh, he said he'd talk to the property department and, uh, he kept saying sale and I said, well, I said, there's no.
Dollar.
Yeah, and I said, as it stands right now, by my understanding from the, you know, uh, the, um, assessor's office of the Town of Colony, there's, there's taxes owed on it. And I said, there's no access for the, for the rail company to get to it. I said, it was purchased probably along with the other Delaware and Hudson assets in ninety-three. And it was already basically cut off from any other ability to utilize it. I said, there's not even rail on it at this point. It's just a long strip of property. So, and he said he, he, you know, take it back to his people too. So, so that's, that's all I have on that.
We got somebody, we got a name now and.
We have a name, I think, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Name names.
Yeah, one, one thing at a time.
Yep.
Exactly.
Next time.
Next. Uh, just happy to see that D O T replaced the barrier at exit six last meeting.
Yep.
What was the barrier?
Guy crashed, you know?
Yeah, back to the chamber. Door drill a few months, cigar grill.
Uh, well, I'm excited that, uh, uh, there won't be any, uh, post-Christmas blues this year because the day after Christmas is our big Hanukkah celebration right here, uh, five o'clock P M. It'll be hosted by, uh, Kabad of Colonies, Rabbi Mordechai Rubin. Uh, it'll start with a menorah lighting. It'll be, uh, latkes, you know, pancakes for everyone. Uh, the fire department will, uh, drop Hanukkah gelt, the coins from their truck, uh, for the kids, um, yes.
It'll be here at the hall.
Yes, yeah, same place as last year, so that, that'll be good. Um, bring your friends, bring your family. Um, it's gonna be awesome. So, uh, so come enjoy the second night of Hanukkah that, that night. Um, and, uh, yeah, um, the details are, uh, are out. Uh, you got my email.
Yes, it's on Facebook.
Awesome. Good. Thank you for doing that.
For sure.
Good. So, um, I'll see you all in just over a week there.
So, good. Thank you. Don?
Um, the, the Tahoe and the leaf machine, uh, will be going up on Oxen International the next day or so. We have to wait two weeks for it so that it goes, it goes in conjunction with the next village board meeting. Uh, just a reminder, village office is gonna be closed at two P M on the twenty-fourth and the thirty, or the.
Thirty-first.
The twen, uh, thirty-first. Get my mind blank here for a minute. Um, and then we'll be closed on Christmas and New Year's. Um, I heard today Seven Zox is coming on Monday, the twenty-third to do the tree trimming on Brookside. Um, I went today to pick up the Joe Kelly that owns Northern Lights. Uh, had a Toys for Tots bin. It was like three quarters away full. I brought that down to the police department. At the same time, he gave me a check for five hundred dollars for Toys for Tots.
Very nice.
Um, tomorrow night from four to seven, Capitol District Transportation Committee, their council is gonna be holding a public meeting in regards to redesigning Broadway, so anybody's available. Great, pretty.
Is it right here?
Right here.
Okay.
And lastly, I, um, we have been talking about the Manans monthly or whatever we're calling it. Um, we'll have a concept done by the end of this week that we could, I could share with everybody.
Is that starting in January?
Probably, but probably, it's probably not gonna be into the.
It'll probably be February.
Okay.
Probably February, but we're gonna get it, but Ja, Jason doesn't notice, but he's helping with it, so.
He was voluntold. You're voluntold, right?
And. I'm gonna say, I think I got everything.
You got everything.
Okay.
Thanks, Don. All the comments.
Bill? Alright, couple things. Now, while driving north on Villa Road, you know, last month, I heard one yell, no train whistle crime on each side of the street being partly blocked by some tree branches or truck. I already reported this problem to the Manand Police and Don, and.
It's where fixed.
Right? Is it fixed? I don't know. Has it been fixed?
I'll, I'll think so because they've been kinda short.
Yes.
Oh, well, I hope they'll get. I hope they'll get. I hope they'll get to it at some point in time.
We'll get it tomorrow, Bill.
Alright, thanks. Now, there's one blue sign with white letters saying Bethany Presbyterian Church, posted on Menand Road and Broadway Junction. This blue sign should be removed, though, given that Bethany Presbyterian Church no longer exists. I hope they can get that done at some point in time.
We'll get it tomorrow.
Right, good. So that's two victories I'm gonna.
Alright, yeah, keep going.
Alright, while driving west on Clifford Road, I'm delighted to see that our public works guys removed the branches, tree branches from both the speed limit sign, thirty sign, and the yellow children's play sign. I'd like to thank our public works guys for getting the job done. Well done.
That's three victories.
Yeah, that's right. Three times the charm.
Uh, it is. I like, alright, I'd like to propose a village ordinance requiring all political wall signs we remove in Manans within seventy-two hours after elections get, get undone under the penalties of fines and community work.
We're working on it. Yeah.
Alright, I'd like to see that happen. And I like, and I'm glad to see that Manans Farmers Region Market held New York's love for people in Western North Carolina that have been victims of the Hurricane Hill, however you pronounce it. To help those people recover from the devastating storm. And also, I was very proud that done my part to help the people of Western North Carolina, which I spent time picking up litter and sweeping areas.
I saw you there.
Yep, and I'm glad you witnessed it. I appreciate it.
Yep.
Be nice and hopefully they'll recover and sweep faster. Now, I do support policies concerning sexual harassment, workplace violence, which sexual harassment, workplace violence cannot and will not be tolerated, right, rated. I'd like to propose policies against harassment of any kind, like because of age, nationality, disability, gender or political beliefs. So I want that broadened.
Alright.
Now, I wish to propose to sandblasts and prime and repaint window sills and outside wooden frames of two fifty Broadway buildings.
Which, which windows, Bill?
Well, the building where the police station and the court are.
Uh, on which side?
All sides.
Okay, we're working on that.
Alright, I wanna paint it either regular green or screen or white green.
White.
I want green.
Okay, sorry.
Yeah, come on. I'll pay for the, for the white. Really? I'll pay for the green paint.
No, we can't do it.
I have one more thing. Now, while in Manans Life or Public Life, I noticed and observed one fire extinguisher was being blocked by one large set of plants. So I removed the set of plants far enough from the fire extinguisher and I reported this prompt in my very step.
Okay.
People gotta understand that nothing can be blocked in fire extinguishers. The same thing with fire extinguishers. I'd like to thank you for speaking on the important village issues for the last time for this year. And I wish everybody Merry Christmas and have a peaceful New Year. Thanks, Bill.
You too. Thank you.
I hope I have a better year with my health next year.
Alright.
So too.
Yep.
Is that gonna be this thing?
Yes, I got it.
Good night, everyone.
Night.
Mark anything?
I have just one question, sir. The, the Water Works project, the proposal, is that, is that a yearly thing or?
It's a subscription.
Just one year at a time.
Annually.
I was just curious.
Yes.
Okay.
Uh, so.
Thank. I mean, if you, if you said it and you hated it, could you go out with my question?
Yeah.
And if you love it, you just.
You know, honestly, I don't think it's something that we're gonna subscribe to forever.
Right, no, no.
Eventually, we will get to a point where we'll have enough data and, you know, the, the South Bend project will be over.
Right, it's kind of an educational tool.
Absolutely.
I, I think, I think.
But with the massive project that's going on.
Right.
Uh, and and.
We'll have the new norm from that too. We'll cut the fat out.
I just was curious if you had a sign out three years or five years.
Plan and then after a few years, we'll just say, you know what, we're, we're in a good place. We, we understand it. Uh, and and we may not have to subscribe to it.
Right, right.
So uh, it's, it's not a forever thing.
No, no, I understand completely. I, I certainly support it.
It'll be interesting to hear from the other municipalities, like how long and how long they, they plan.
Albion used it for uh, for, I think, either three or four years.
Okay.
While they were working through a massive project.
Okay.
And, and then uh, for them, it just, you know, they had the data they needed and they, and they canceled, they, they terminated their subscription. But they still use the data.
Yeah.
In their budgets and so on.
Yes.
So uh.
Makes sense.
Hopefully I hear from Lee and Sheldon.
Sheldon, yeah.
Yes, I have a couple of things. Um, talking about sprucing up signs, in uh, twenty twenty-three, I brought up in for before uh, the uh, hundredth anniversary about our village signs and kind of freshening them up.
In the works.
It, yeah, it was in the works, but now it's been a year and a half. And so hopefully we can make that happen in twenty twenty-five.
It's actually gonna, we're putting it in the budget for next year. We do, cause each sign is like three thousand dollars the way they currently are. So we're gonna, there's be twelve thousand dollars for, but we're, we're working on different designs and stuff and that's all gonna be incorporated.
Okay, in the budget.
Yes.
That's good. Okay. Uh, second thing is um, Soldier's on. I totally support our veterans and many people in my family have served. Concerns me about the hut housing sign that's there right now.
That's not hut, that's not hut. Housing Community uh, Renewal is a different agency. That's a state agency and I believe that's where they got a good portion of their funding. That's not hut. Yeah, so that's.
That is, is.
I understand where you're going, but yeah, that's Housing Community Renewal. Yeah.
Yeah.
So uh, yeah, not hut, not hut.
Okay.
Okay, I hope that's, I hope that helps.
Yeah, yeah, that, that does, cause that was very concerning to me because I just feel that we're, we're, you know, we've already got two pot shops, we got the methadone clinic, and I'd like to kind of talk about the fact that I really don't wanna see gun shops, payday loans and pawn shops come here. And that's really what, you know, I mean, if we keep going this route and I, that's like, was my concern with the hut housing. I said, oh, my God, we got gun shops coming, payday loans and pawn shops anytime soon. And I don't think that's the community.
No.
That we want to bring to the area. I mean, we did already put a moratorium on two pawn shops. That's it. But I hope we're not gonna get gunshot, pawn shop, payday loans, you know. Some of these small villages are getting those. And maybe if we can be conscious of not going that route. Thank you.
Thank you, Sydney.
Thank you. Anyone, anything else online?
Alright.
Can you do anything?
What's, what are you getting married?
Oh, wow.
Uh, we have nothing for executive session, so we need a motion to adjourn.
Uh, motion to adjourn at eight or seven sixteen P M.
I'll second. All those in paper.
Uh. Merry Christmas. Happy holidays, everyone.
Happy holidays.
A great holiday, guys.
You too, Steve. Thank you.
I'll call you tomorrow.
Yeah, give me a call.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you.
Okay, bye.